Good evening, the time being seven oh one on November twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Our quorum of the planning board being present, I call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda, Agenda Item A, approval of minutes from the October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion to approve the minutes of October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two as written.
All right, I have a motion made, do I have a second? Motion made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Agenda Item B, committee reports administrative actions, are there any committee reports that anyone wishes to make at this time?
All set, Mr. Chairman, aye.
All right, hearing none, moving on to Agenda Item B two, town planners' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, couple of items. First item I want to note is that NIMCOG, the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments, has issued a transportation survey called Envision Two Thousand and Fifty for a long-range regional transportation plan, which is aimed to be a comprehensive vision of the future of transportation in our region. This shared survey that can be found in the news section on the town website. And any further questions can be directed to Justin Howard at NIMCOG, and I have his contact information if anyone is interested in that. Next item, a bit of an update, last meeting we discussed quantifying the as-built and occupancy relationship for future site plan reviews. At the last meeting, the board had requested include any interim as-bills to be tied to occupancy for a new construction or site plan, and then possibly having performance guarantees or cash bonds to guarantee the final one hundred percent as-built thereafter. I'm still working on putting together the language with the town engineer and the building commissioner. I'm hoping to have that kind of solidified by December twelfth for you folks to review.
Right, if we have it on the twelfth and we approve it, do we still think we could start it off at the beginning of the year, or you think that's too soon?
I think that we can kind of, it's not gonna be dropped on anybody as a surprise, it can be, once it's adopted. I don't have any agenda items for the first meeting of the year in January, so I think we will have a little bit of time to take a beat, and it won't be like January ninth, like that's it. So I think that maybe new applications for the second meeting in January, or maybe February, we can talk about it early and often with those applicants to make sure that it's incorporated fairly going forward.
Okay, that's all I, I just wanna make sure people have a little bit of a heads up.
Hundred percent.
All right, very good.
Um, next item, so lately we've had a lot of discussions, and I say we, you know, the town, different boards, town staff have had discussions regarding the updating the housing production plan, pending forty B applications, and the MBTA communities legislation that came down from the state earlier this year. And with all of that in mind, I wanted to bring a proposal to the board which would help generate more affordable housing units in the community. I, this is just something I'm kind of laying out to you folks to kind of get your feedback initially, but I would like to propose a change to the zoning bylaw at a next town meeting, maybe May, if you thinks it's, think it's appropriate, which would allow for the conversion of commercial units in mixed-use developments to become residential units by special permit on the condition that they be maintained as affordable in perpetuity. And my thought behind that was, is that it would have the potential to generate additional affordable housing units, fill vacancies on Main Street, and get some of these properties back on the tax rolls. Some of them are currently filing for abatements, and you know, I think this could be a win-win-win if it's something we wanna pursue. I would like to discuss it as a potential planning board sponsored article on the warrant for February to go into May town meeting. If that's not something that you think is feasible, I'm happy to discuss it for October, but I kinda wanted to plant the seed now and kind of get your initial feedback for that. I'm happy to answer questions now, we can kind of all digest it and talk about it another time.
I mean, I, I don't have any off-the-cuff problem with it because it actually fits with the new zoning because we don't require that in the new zoning that we just passed.
Correct.
So it would just be a look back to, I mean, whoever was doing it, they'd have to go back and remodel all those commercial units to make them residential, you know, compliant anyways. And if they wanted to do that, I suppose it wouldn't be, you know, the end of the world, you know, on a case-by-case basis.
Right, which is why I recommend it be a special permit, we can look at whether it would be something that would be appropriate for that particular site. And just looking at it from a logistics perspective, commercial units require more parking, so we already would be okay on parking because you're supposed to have, you know, a certain amount per square footage, plus the number of employees on shift, where if you're turning some of these rather small units into one or two-person places for living, you're maybe looking at a max of two cars, and that's already well taken care of in most of these parking plans. And my thought also in making it a special permit retroactive to old mixed-use developments that required the commercial unit in order to build residential, the idea was that developers and builders were doing the commercial unit because they wanted to make the money on the residential, cuz that's where the money was at the time. And housing is critical, we need more of it, and they know that that was filling the bigger need than the commercial unit. So although they agreed to construct the commercial unit in order to get to the residential with no density at the time, mind you, on no-density cap, then I think that this would be an interesting path forward to explore as a way to kind of resolve more than one issue.
Okay, all right, like I said, no, no off-the-cuff problem with it, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, a question from Alex as well.
Yep.
How many units are we talking, you think?
Most of the mixed-use developments have one to two commercial units, varying in size from as low as like six hundred square feet up to two thousand-ish. I think in the, off the top of my head of ones that have been approved probably since two thousand and seventeen that are either under construction actively or already constructed, a dozen, maybe, dozen, maybe two.
So not a big number per se.
No, 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 not a huge number now.
My only concern would be that if some of the people that are building now get wind of this,
Yeah.
They'll say, well, we don't wanna make it commercial anymore, and now it's gonna be all residential one.
Then they can come for a special permit.
Well, I know, but still, we still, we need them commercial spaces.
Right.
Hopefully they, they have planned for that, because at every meeting we talk about these developments, I always bring it up. Listen, you know, there's a lot of vacant buildings out there that are office spaces that aren't used. What makes you think, y'all, it's gonna be built, it's gonna be, you know, occupied, you know, so. They don't have an answer for that, but not that I expected it, but, you know, I just, I think the commercials is what we need more than, more than residential, cuz that's the way it was built, but let's see what happens, so.
All right, lighter topic, Starbucks is finally open, so hope everyone's enjoying that.
Wait, you can hear Mr. Sadwick.
Oh, he was there on day one, it's fine. And just a note to everybody, and for your benefit and those folks watching at home, that the annual tree lighting celebration is this Friday at five-thirty out of a town common. Santa will be here, there'll be hot chocolate and roasted marshmallows and all sorts of fun stuff, so anybody who's up for that, please come join us.
Excellent.
I'd like to back up one topic. Mrs. Fowler will be very upset at me. My wife June was the first person in Starbucks, five o'clock in the morning. She didn't get up at five, seven o'clock, five o'clock in the morning, the day it opened. And someone took her picture unbeknownst to her, the back of her, and they sent a card to us. I don't know how they found out who she was, but they wanted it signed. Oh, yeah. But, oh, yeah, that's.
John, don't upset.
Yeah.
All right, excellent, so I'm sure everybody will enjoy their Starbucks now, excellent.
Oh, yeah.
So the Ms. Lauer proposal, will that be an agenda item at our next meeting, or maybe the meeting after that?
Whenever.
It certainly can be if you'd like it to, and I think that would, it would kind of benefit, maybe we tack it on at the end of a meeting just to kind of have a discussion with all you folks, and we can kind of go back and forth and think of, you know, things you wanna include in the provision, and it would really just be a modification to the zoning bylaw under probably the multifamily development section eight point two. And we can kind of talk about what that would look like, I'm happy to put it on the December twelfth agenda cuz I don't think that one's gonna be terribly heavy.
Okay, I might just be very interested in knowing what properties would currently be eligible.
Sure.
Does it affect any properties that are currently under development that they could pivot and maybe try to come back and do a reorganization? And as you said, anybody doing the property now is not bound by the commercial anymore. Anyway, they can come to us, they want the special permit for all residential.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, one more question to Alex, any more as-bills resolved since we brought this topic up?
I think just one fifty Main Street at Tanian, that's the only one I can, that's jumping out at me right this second. That was bond was returned, the whole thing.
Okay, I got a meeting with Mr. Sadwick the other day about a Tewksbury Habitat, a home builds site, and, and we got into the discussion about the as-bills, you know, and I know you guys have been chatting as well, so he told me that, but I just wanted to tread lightly on this and not put something that we might have jumped into sooner into play with, in tying the hands of some of the developers in town, and try to have a better working relationship with them and getting some feedback from them. We got that letter from a gentleman from Pinnacle Construction, which I thought was a good letter. So I don't know if we're ready to go January first and on with this. I would like us to review that again possibly and make sure we have it right, so. For the board's consideration in, in this topic, and so, and maybe get to, get, get a good, I'd get a good as-bill plan with, and a way to get to the as-bills at the end as we go down that road for the developers, so just, just to put that on, on the, on the agenda, so. I'm also Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item C, eighteen eighty Main Street and eighty-five Livingston Street, Trewsberry signed special permit. Have a motion to waive the public reading.
Subpo.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those appro, uh, I'm sorry, all those opposed, hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Once you guys get settled, you just state your names to the record, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Joe Vacchioni, Birdmire Associates, I'm the architect.
Sarah Maggiore.
You're gonna pull those in there cuz we definitely wanna pick those up.
Sarah Maggiore and Trewsberry Company.
Floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you, so, and I'd like to ask Plaid Board how they would like to run through this package. Obviously, there's three buildings, there's, and there's signage for this, but I guess I'll start off with just kind of summarizing our objectives and goals and signage packages. Four main objectives, the first one was to standardize the kit of parts for the entire site. That includes, you know, the treehouse logo and the gable of each of the, each of the buildings, that includes directory placards just to denote the function of each of the buildings. You know, again, that, that halo lit logo in the, in the rafters, that's a tone-on-tone, so it really wouldn't be too visible during the day. It really would come alive at night being halo lit, it's not externally lit or internally lit, it's halo lit, so it would just show the profile around the side. And obviously to achieve a consistent material color palette that ties together the, the property. The second objective was to provide an entry moment on Ironwood Lane where there currently isn't one in the sole ingress and ingress of the property. The third one was utilize existing treehouse brand moments, so as evident in their Charlton location, they have that overhead sign, as evident in the Kip Cod locations, that tone-on-tone gable logo. And then four, utilize existing signage that exists on the site, replace it in kind where we can. There's, there's signage, there's plenty of signage on the existing buildings. We'd like to reutilize those locations where, where appropriate, but, you know, and I submitted calculations, you know, what, to, to Alex earlier just based on, you know, the size of the facade and the percentage of coverage on the facade. And then there's also per year's zoning bylaw, the linear square foot, or the linear footage versus the amount of square footage. We're really not trying to create a series of signs that really maximize the allotted square footage, but try to be tasteful in how much signage and where it is given the scale of the site, the offset from the street given the large parking lot, and then also just the character of the area. So there's, we can run through all the signage, starting with the site, and then going to the outpost, main building, and tavern building, or we can do one at a time. I'd like to defer to the planning board how you, you'd like us to approach this package.
All right, just go in order, makes more sense.
Your signage is numbered on the key plan, I would, I would take it in order.
Sure, and I, I'll just kind of run through the signage and then we can elaborate on the ones that you have questions about just to, to respect your time. Starting with number one is the monument sign currently, you know, there's an existing Tewksbury Country Club sign. We just are proposing to replace that in kind, removing the digital component of that sign and utilize, utilizing that as just a, a double-sided primary treehouse logo sign. And again, the, the logo is halo lit, and the typeface is also halo lit. Number two is the flag on the flagpole, it's currently a Tewksbury Country Club flagpole, or a flag on the flagpole. We'd be also replacing that in kind, no square footage increase, the adjacent state flag and USA flag are existent, we remain. We're not proposing any changes there. Number three is removed, it was an existing sign that was removed, so number four is the overhead entrance sign.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, could we, if we have a question on one, two, three, four, five, or would each one should, wouldn't it be best to do it then?
I'm, I'm happy to do it either way, I'm happy to run through the entire package and kind of, you know, pin each one.
Why don't you, why don't you present each one?
Sure.
So why don't we just do the two on this page, and then I'll check with the board if they have anything on the page that we're on, how's that? So you've got those two so far, right?
Yes, we have the monument sign and the flag.
Okay, so does anybody have any questions, Mr. Fowler?
On number one, I like the sign, to be honest with you. It'd be just an idiot, and it's, it's, that's your, sends a message as to what is here, and it's not obtrusive. I like it a lot. My only question is, I find it funny that in today's day and age, you're getting rid of the digital sign, and if you were to sometime come back, where would you put a digital sign?
I don't think there's an interest to put a digital sign here at all.
Today?
I don't think, I don't think, it's not really in the treehouse kind of
Okay.
In their, in their brand or something they're interested in doing. You know, the, a lot of the greatness that is treehouses internal, so I don't think you'll be seeing something coming back later for a digital sign.
Very good, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, just one question on number one, the illumination halo, halo lit. What is that, is that just from, from the base shooting up, or is it gonna be actually lit, like, like the other one is?
Yeah, so the, so the logo, the front face of the logo is not lit, all the illumination is in the back of the logo. So when you, at night, when you can actually see the illumination, it's just gonna show the outline of that logo.
Oh, okay.
So there's not gonna be anything, any projection or illumination projecting beyond that sign.
I got you, okay, good.
And that's pretty much consistent for most signs there, here, we, we don't wanna create any sort of light pollution, and in fact, we're trying to reduce that throughout the site, including the new signage. And, and again, the halo lit is, is something that we, we like the look of. We think it, you know, it's, it's really a sleek look, and then two, again, the lighting level and illumination of the site.
All right, is that it?
No, I just had one more construction-related question. What degree of demolition are you gonna be doing for the electrical? Are you gonna, how are you gonna safe that off? Because I know there's this sign here, you have electrical, and then also you're gonna be removing the lanterns and putting in your, your beer cans at the front steps. So I was just curious, what's your approach with the electrical on that?
Well, there's a, there's a existing electrical in, in this sign, and are we talking about the monument sign, are we talking about the?
Well, for the monument sign for now, I was just curious if you're taking it all the way back to the panel, pulling it out and just leaving it in conduit? Or are you gonna leave the wires safed off?
I mean, we're, we're, we'd have to engineer the, the electrical and figure out which panels to go to, you know, we're kind of at stage one, you know, trying to get approval on the signs before we engineer, have engineered plans for them, but for the cans, which we'll get to, we're gonna be capping the power for that, those cans are not illuminated. For this sign, it, we'd be utilizing the existing electrical components for the news, for the new signage. But again, that'd have to be engineered and make sure that the power and type of power is adequate for what we're trying to do here.
Okay.
All right, so we'll move on to three and four.
There's no questions on the, the flag.
I suspect not.
Three is a remove, a removed sign, it was part of that, the removal of the planter. We'll go to number four, which is the overhead entrance sign. So this sign is located at the sole point of egress and ingress to the site. There's currently no signage for the property on Livingston Street, which is a secondary, the secondary road to our actual property, and then obviously Ironwood Lane, which is that sole ingress and ingress point. So we really wanted to create an entry moment here, which also includes wayfinding, so you actually know where you're going on the site. And we think it's a really important moment so people know, know where to go. You know, and, and again, this sign is synonymous with the treehouse brand, going back to their Charlton location, their headquarters. And the sign is currently located at the location of two lampposts. So with the removal of the two lampposts and the sign being halo lit like we discussed, there's a net negative illumination level there. And it's scaled to span the driveway and accommodate the largest vehicle delivering to the site. So it's less than, I know, you know, going to the, the closest sign in your bylaw, it's the, the freestanding pole sign. When we're coming, you know, for a sign, it's just as, as one, as a byright sign, obviously this is a special permit. Pole signs are allowed to be twenty feet, this one's seventeen feet, the clearance is fourteen feet to accommodate the largest, the largest vehicle. And again, it includes the site wayfinding, the sign is across from the condominiums. Let's see, total sign area for both sides and including the wayfinding is forty-eight square feet. I know when talking about pole signs, it's calculated as a maximum fifty feet, and that's only calculating one side. But even with all the signage combined here, it's less than fifty square feet. And the materials coloring quality align with the rest of the structure to celebrate the copper accents. It's all the blackened wood, and then the sign itself is both still below the tree line. But again, the, the point of this sign is to create an entry moment where there currently isn't one. I know there's, there's a monument sign on, on Main Street, but there's actually no access to the site from Main Street. So we do think it's important that there's some sort of signage at the termination of our driveway into the property.
So just so I'm clear, so the, basically the idea being that this would replace the signage that existed on the removed wall then, that's the idea?
Yeah.
Because if that wall were still there, it'd be on there, but you're removing that, so that means you lose any kind of notice out that way, and this would be the replacement to that?
Yeah, and to be honest, the, this, this Tewksbury Country Club's plaque that existed there was almost unnoticed from Livingston Street, I didn't see it until I came around the building because it was so close to the actual building. And obviously, we don't wanna be putting a, a blade sign on Livingston, Livingston Street because when there's not that setback there from the road, we don't wanna create any, any sort of hazard from that main road. We think it's, setting it back into our property within the driveway would be a safer way because people are at lower speeds, and then also at the termination of, of the driveway itself.
I guess what my, my meaning was, was that currently there is, it's their version of it, but the, the country club has something out there sort of announcing itself on the Livingston side. And in your case, you're just asking to create your own version, it's just yours is a little more internal than where's their, where theirs was because you're removing the wall.
Yeah, I, I believe the, the wall is already, has been already been removed.
Yes.
So it doesn't exist there.
Right.
So, yeah, it's creating that, that point where the, the Livingston Street, where the Tewksbury Country Club on Livingston Street, that was their, I guess, entry point for, for, for when it was the Tewksbury Country Club. So, yeah, it's supposed to replace that one-to-one.
Okay, good enough. All right, any?
I have some comments, Mr. Chairman, if you would, about number four.
Mr. Fatale?
Yeah, first and foremost, I understand what you're trying to do as far as getting people into the site. I think the front sign on Main Street, which has been there forever, will suffice in some capacity for people knowing where you are, unless they're coming up Livingston Street, but I just think, my opinion is the size of the sign and its proximity to the abuddists across the street on Eagle's Landing is just too intrusive, too big, and, and the number of people that travel in and out of that site that go into Eagle's Landing have to see that particular sign on a regular basis. You know, people live directly across from the sign, people's homes are right there, bedrooms are right there. So I don't know if it's needed per se, you know? It's one sign that, you know, I don't have a problem with the majority of signs right now, but that's one sign that I can't see myself voting for, for your purpose you wanna put it there, so. I do, I, I have seen your Charlton sign, I look very similar, but I mean, we're, we're a small town of Tewksbury. It's right in a bucks of fifty-five and over community right there. So I'm sure this is off the beaten path to a degree, right, the Charlton sign?
Yeah, it's in the driveway, yeah.
Yeah. But you're, you're right on the street, I mean, I see the pictures you have below, and that the building you're showing there under sign number four is a lot closer than what it looks. Having been to the site this week and speaking to some of the neighbors and seeing the proximity of the sign, I just don't think it belongs, that big of a sign belongs there. If you did something smaller to a degree to get somebody into the place, then I maybe want to do something like that, but to me, the sign is just, is just too big, and I think it intrudes on the neighbors that, that live there year-round, and so that's the bad news I have about the sign. I did speak to a number of the neighbors there, myself personally, to get their view, and it was very disturbing to a lot of them that I spoke to. They were, were not aware of the, of the sign that was going there. So along the sign, idea, did you guys notify all of the abuddists that were on the list?
I would, ever to Alex.
Before we go too far down this road, because we've already done this once at a hearing very recently, it's been confirmed by the office that the notices went out, that's the end of it. We're not gonna get into a back and forth again like we did a couple of hearings ago with people. If the office confirms that the notices went out, that's the end of it. So if the abuddist's list was done and the notice is sent, that's the end of our discussion on it, cuz I'm not gonna turn around this time.
Yes.
I'm not gonna turn around this time and do the complete opposite of what we argued when we told the people talking from the podium that when they said they didn't get notices, that they were done, and now do the opposite this time. So if the offices confirmed it, that's the end of it as far as we're concerned.
Mr. Johnson, I was at the site and spoke to abuddists that are there, and they never received any notice of it.
And I don't care, that's the same thing the person stood up there and said, are they here now? If they've gotten noticed, then it doesn't matter anyways, because if they're here, they no likely complain about not getting noticed because they're here, so that's the first thing. Second of all, I'm not gonna turn around and do a one-eighty when we told the people that were trying to tell us they didn't get noticed out at the podium, and we sat up here and told them, the office confirmed it, that means it's done. That's the end of the conversation for us, if they wanna pursue it beyond that, it will not be here. So I will not let us then turn around and do a one-eighty and make an argument for people in the audience that they didn't get noticed. First of all, how would we know that? We have no idea, someone's telling you that maybe, but that was the same thing they said before when we made the.
I had a question to her.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, I don't wanna get into that discussion, once the office confirms that it's done, that's the end of it for us. Anyone who wants to go after it after that, that's on them, we're not carrying water for that once the office confirms that they have done it, that's all I'm saying.
Well, by asking Alex right now, did you say she sent them out?
Which she did, which is, that's what I'm saying, that's the end of it.
You don't know that either, you, you assume that because then I do as well.
I'm basing it on the office confirming they sent it. What I'm saying is, then the conversation starts to turn to, people told me, we're not gonna do that, is what I'm saying. People didn't get it, then that's for them to deal with, we're not gonna do that, once the office tells us it was done. Ms. Louden tells us, oops, we didn't send out the abuddist's list, now we have an issue. Otherwise, that's the end of it for us, that's all I'm saying.
So, well, I have a list here, Stephen, I, I, I won't get into that, but, and that's, and maybe I'll discuss with you, Alex, later, but I mean, if we have a list of, for any, any site of five hundred letters that went out, you know, do any of them come back? Do you think, the possibility of maybe some?
Well, again, you, you're talking about two different things, the requirement is that they be sent out. Like, what happens after that isn't, right, isn't, and then it's also put in the newspaper. It's also put, you know what I mean, it's a put on the public station. So again, if they found out about it, then one of those things worked. So if they're saying, if talking about it, or they're here, then one of those things worked because they're here.
Well, they're not here, Stephen, because.
At which point it's for them to complain about, if they want to make a complaint about it, is what I'm saying. It's not for us to now argue with the office as to whether or not they sent each thing to each person. It's not for us to now argue with the office as to whether or not they sent each thing to each person. They take the list, they send them out, that's what they're required to do.
Okay, so now that the list has been established and sent out, um uh again, I'm not in favor of the sign and have a hard time voting for that particular sign, so I'll let it go at that, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, on sign or on item three or four?
Uh, item four.
Okay.
The, so, and I don't mean to make light of this because I I I do see the lot of thought and and you have a very, very uh nice brand here. I like what you're doing with a lot of the look. It's it's not easy for me to see the Country Club undergoing a transformation. Uh I was here, you know, much like everybody else when it went up, and it was a real jewel to the town, and we were all very uh very proud of it. Um so putting that aside, um you know, I walked to this page and I saw sign four. Um I had a very similar reaction to Mr. Fattalia and some of the neighbors. This to me is is more Disney World, Jurassic Park, not small-town brewery. Um and also, I mean, my gym is right there, so I happen to drive by this area. And I I also, as Mr. Fattalia pointed out, I think the scale of the sign isn't really as clear in the picture as it is when I'm there on site that especially these condos on the end, um that's gonna be a very large obstruction to their view. Uh I mean, that's gonna be what they see looking out their window. Uh I would, I I'm not saying we can't have any sign there, but I I would love to see something that's a little s- little scaled down and maybe a little more neighborhood-friendly. Um I also would have a very hard time approving this as it is.
Nothing on three, right? Yeah, I mean, that's already done, so I guess Yeah, uh, Mr. Fowler?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh I'm pleased with what you did on um the the entrance driveway because uh with the amount of cars that you had coming and going Thanksgiving days coupled before, uh it was beneficial to have right and a left turn, very beneficial. So I could see why you took that down, took the uh the island out and uh putting the the other style, similar styles which you have going into the site out there. But I was surprised, and I don't care about this, but I was surprised that that sign is brown and the sign inside is black, whereas everything inside is black. You know what I'm talking about?
I'm I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Okay, sign number three.
Not three, three is the wall.
Yeah, three, well.
Three is the wall, the wall's gone.
Sign number three, right there.
Nope, that's the wall, that's just their example from Charleston, we don't, that's not us, that's the one they want to put here.
They're not gonna have a sign up?
No, no, that's this thing here, that's just their version of it in Charleston.
Okay, all right.
Charl- Charlton?
Charlton.
Charlton, sorry. Hopefully nobody from Charleston's watching.
So out on Livingston Street, there'll be no sign at all?
Uh, no, that's, I mean, that's why we propose a sign here, because we think that it's at the entrance of the property. Uh right now on Livingston Street, there is no sign. Uh when we get to the outpost, uh we we do have a flag that would front Livingston Street, Livingston Street, that's up next when we get to the outpost.
Okay.
Um but on Livingston Street, there's no sort of uh monument or pole sign proposed, no.
Okay. The, thank you for clarifying that. I can see the the necessity of having directional sign at the driveway then, as you do on the right-hand post, there's a directional sign, to me, that makes sense. And you don't want something that they can't read um and stop at the middle of the driveway, you know, where we're going, you know, would be very difficult, very dangerous. But as far as uh the directional aspect of it, I can agree with uh Mr. Fattalia about not only uh the size of that, but when I read the letters, which I I took mine out, I'd be more willing to give it to you so you'll have an idea because
We 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 have them, I
Oh, you do?
We have them at our front, yeah.
Oh, okay, that was good.
Received those today, yeah.
Okay, good, all right. Um so that's where I stand, but um unless you can convince us otherwise, uh we should move on.
All right, so before you go, there's a couple of things. One, I was remiss in not mentioning at the beginning that the signed special permit um approvals for tonight anyways, uh whether we get there tonight, I don't know, require four out of four. You you can postpone any decision until there are five members present, if that's up, that's up to you, if you want to request that. But as it sits now, you'd need four out of the four that are here
Yeah.
for one, okay, so I'll I'll throw that to you now.
Just keeping that in in uh, I'm glad you mentioned that about the four, because on the twelfth, I will not be here.
Okay, so there's there's a little, some moving parts over the next few meetings. Obviously, that's up to you guys to request what you want in terms of trying to, you know, work with who's here or who's not for whenever that comes up, all right, but I just want to make sure I let you know, that's one. Two, my thoughts on sign four are this. Well, one, I hate messing with companies', you know, things. The way they, you know, sort of present themselves, you know, especially if it's consistent. Uh I had a similar issue when Walgreens, you know, Walgreens, Walmart came back in for a new sign because they changed the way their signs were, we had a whole thing about not wanting it to look like it was gonna look, but that's their logo, that's what their their stores all look like. You know, so you know, but sometimes we have to work with making modifications to make it fit for here as opposed to other places in some cases. This may be an example of that, because while I would be, I wouldn't have a problem with this one because it's more internal than the wall was. This could have been proposed, I suspect, coming right in off the street, which I think would have been a complete non-starter, but made even more, for what it is, possibly made more sense out there, it just wasn't gonna fit. This is internal, basically internal, sort of compared to where the street is. So I wouldn't have had a problem with it, but you've already heard at least two members, possibly three, tell you they don't really like it. So what I think about it is sort of moot.
Yeah.
Um but I'll say this, and I don't know with the other members, how they would feel about it this way. If you were to lose the top, but keep the pillar pieces that you have, that might work. You know what I mean, it's it's the the hugeness of that T-piece coming across the top that's a problem because the pillars themselves, or whatever you want to call them, that have your directionals and whatnot, would really be taking the place of the two light poles that are there. Thicker, obviously, than the light poles, but I mean, in terms of where they are and what they are, when you add in like the directional of it, they take the place of the two light poles that are there, as they are now, but without that large piece going across the top that does have a somewhat welcome to Jurassic Park feel to it, so I can understand that. You know, maybe the one in Charlton fits better because, I mean, you know, as Mr. Fattalia pointed, we're a small town, but Charlton's fifteen thousand people, we're thirty thousand. So it can't be because we're a small town, because they are way smaller than we are. But that might also mean that it's just less folks around. So maybe it's just a little less obtrusive to whomever, wherever it is, you know what I mean? This is Main Street, basically, Livingston Main Street, you know, and you do have, you know, uh Eagles Landing right there facing it. So you have some logistics that you're working with here that would make this a little different, in which case, you know, you might have to work with us to figure out something that maybe you guys, it's palatable to you, palatable to us, palatable to the neighbors, but get you kind of what you're looking for, maybe without everything. But that's up to you guys, I, like I said, I was fine with this version, I could be fine with the, just the two pieces themselves. You know, they may even become just a hair shorter because you don't need the top piece anymore, which again, I think would maybe help some people, because if you topped them off, just above Well, that's what I mean, if those were to be topped off just maybe a little above your your logo with some sort of, you know, something, again, aesthetically pleasing at the top, that that might work. Uh I mean, it worked for me, I don't, like I said, I don't know about the other members, they probably have to see it, but like I said, it's it's might be a compromise that you could consider and get a little of what you want and give us a little of what we need.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I mean, just, uh, you know, I I appreciate all the comments here and I, you know, I I served on the Sogas planning board, so I totally understand, you know, the the need to balance, you know, the brand versus the need, or the the needs of one and their buddy neighbors. You know, and just in defense of the, in the sign, we tried to scale it in a way that it's no no bigger than what it needs to be in terms of accommodating the largest, um accommodating the largest vehicle that enters the site and then also trying to abide by all the different um uh freestanding pole sign regulations that you have in the bylaw. Uh we tried to make sure that they were all in those confines, but understanding the strong reaction from the neighbor. We're committed, and we said at the last meeting, we're committed to be good neighbors and making compromises where we need to. Um and and I I'd like to know procedurally how to move forward with maybe not continuing this meeting if if there's no other objections to the sign, but compromising on a a condition approval with a monument sign. Obviously, we need some refinement to uh lose that, you know, lose that top piece and go with a monument sort of sign because we do fe- we feel strongly that a sign is needed uh for that primary branding moment and then also the wayfinding in the site more importantly. And I think we can do it a little bit nicer than just cutting it off, we can make it
Right, like I said, you know, decorations up to you, I just, you know, trying to give you a visual.
I totally understand, I I agree with you, um if we can compromise uh and have a, and if other members agree, understanding that we do need four votes for a special permit or to grant a special permit. You know, if that's something that, you know, the the board would accept, uh we would certainly uh come back.
So if I'm not mistaken, we've done it before, we've approved some signs and not others, but left it open to deal with.
Correct, so there's a, there's a couple of different approaches we can take here. Um I think what you're referring to is with Starbucks over the summer, you folks were comfortable with about ninety percent of their signs. There were two of them you were just not happy with, you didn't want to grant at the time, and if they wanted to come forward with a different proposal, that was gonna be on them at a later date. Um so taking that piece, approving the signs as submitted, except for the one that you folks have an issue with, and then kind of combining the effort that you made with the one for the new elementary school where they submitted certain dimensions and you gave them the ability to be able to expand to match the size of the one in front of the high school. So in this situation, what we could do is approve the sign package as submitted except for num- sign number four, which shall be revised to reflect a single monument sign, not to exceed however many square feet, however tall.
Well, the only thing with this one, because there's so many neighbors there, I'd rather have them come back in with this one rather than try to figure out what it should look like and then letting them loose.
So different thing we can do there, so that could look like continuing until December twelfth and they give us a, basically, this ju- this panel just revised with what that would look like. And that revised sign package can be voted on on December twelfth, because otherwise, if we talk about closing the hearing, approving what's here, then we're just gonna have to notify everyone, do the newspaper and do the public hearing all over again, where then it kind of feels piecemeal, if we want to keep everything kind of cohesive.
But we can't pull portions of it out and leave the hearing open itself?
Um.
They close the hearing as to signs, well, one, seven, you know, whatever, if that's where we get to, but leaving open the hearing for, in this case, sign four.
I mean, I guess you could. No, I mean, we haven't done it, I haven't seen it, I wouldn't be able to answer you tonight as to what that would look like, I'd have to talk to town council, so.
Okay, all right, uh we'll get to that when we get to that, I guess.
I mean, if we were to pull, if we were to pull sign four completely and resubmit it as a standalone, would that be something that we could do?
You can do it, the only thing is it requires the whole process, um at which point, if they're gonna resubmit it other than notice going out, we can waive filing fees for that.
Yes.
Right, because they've already really come in, which is trying to figure out a way to be done with everything else.
The only thing tricky with that is that we'd be sending out a whole new set of abuddist notices, which does
Other than the abuddist's costs.
Sure, that's something that absolutely, we have the five fifty.
Yeah. Why don't we move on with the, what we've got here and go through them anyways, and then we'll, we can, you know, circle back on the best approach at the end?
Sure, um so moving on to the outpost building, which is the former salon building, the current here-to-go building. Number five is the outpost Treehouse Directory plaque uh above the door. It's just replaced in the in kind of the previous tenant, but it's significantly smaller and it's not eliminated. Six is the outpost flag, which would be on the, in the gable facing Livingston Street, so that would be the I guess, the only Treehouse element that you'd be be visible from from Livingston Street. And then seven is the gable logo, and that, again, that that'll be present on all three buildings, where that's what we like to do as kind of that brand standard. Um again, referencing the K G R location. That gable logo is tone-on-tone, so black on black. You know, it's halo lit, so at night you can see the outline. And then number eight is the outpost logo, so that's on the cooler building to the right. Um just label it so the the building's called the outpost and just denoting that it's a to-go operation. It's it's largely actually blocked by the the water building that's in front of it. You'll be able to see it from Main Street, but it's it's more internal uh in terms of the people in within the site being able to see it. Um again, that's a halo-lit sign, um and that's it, really. There's no signage proposed on the parking lot facade where the loading dock is, nor on the Ironwood Lane facade. So um and that's every- everything on the outpost, I guess we can, do we want to just do comments on the outpost?
I would, yeah, because we got four on here. Um, Mr. Fowler, anything on these, five, six, seven, or eight?
Um what I want to say and what I what I can say are two different things. I think what you've done, well, I gotta say it, I'm struck down, I'm struck down. I uh, if we can go ahead to how you kept some of the copper on the main building, you know, the copper rakes, you know, the thing about the rakes and uh the copper flashing over the windows and uh and even the uh inserts on the windows in the main building. I mean, that's, they're there already, but the copper kind of sets it off with the black, so it looks nice. Whereas on this building, when you have the signs, I I, other than the evening, will you, do you think you'll even see the, your Treehouse primary logo, black on black during the day?
Yeah, I mean, you'll you'll see the shadows, uh because there is some depth to it, like, you know, it's a few inches deep. And then, and you you can, I mean, I wish I had a picture of the sandwich location, so during the day with sunshine on it and that's, that is some southern exposure, so there will be some shadows. Uh you'll be able to see it just dimensionally during the day, but it really comes alive at night with the with the halo.
I'm not talking negative about it, I'm just giving you my
No, totally, but the the idea is not to be like like Disney World about it, it's really trying to be um tasteful in the in the way we approach and not trying to, you know, over-brand this site. I mean, it may seem like a lot of signs on paper, but realistically, with the scale of the site and the buildings, in our opinion, it's not. Um so that's kind of our approach throughout the site.
So I said my piece about the copper, I'm gonna leave it there, so that's something you can fix though, but you don't have to.
Say, so, sorry, what about the copper, again, it's just the, keeping the copper?
The rakeboard on the addition, it's nothing but a black building.
Gotcha.
And all the other buildings have the copper rakeboard, not thick, just a small trim rakeboard that defines it. And that, this is the only building that doesn't have it. The front building has it, but you took it off the
The addition.
Yeah, so I just wonder if it was just an oversight, or I'm sure with the amount of input that you're putting into this, that four little pieces of copper along the rakeboard not gonna uh break the bank. But everything else looks fine, and I don't want to get ahead of myself, but so I don't want you to think I'm negative about the whole process. Just that building.
Mr. Chairman?
The signs, I'm no pro-
I thought you said you were fine, I'm
The signs, they're they're fine, including the flag, the outpost, I'm fine with it, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Um, I I think these signs are fine. I I do, similar to Mr. Fowler, I do miss the copper accents of the rakeboards and whatnot, but this to me but this, to me, looks like was a very popular theme. You see it in a lot of sports logos, things like that, which is kind of the blackout theme. So I, I kind of assumed that you were just trying to make this building have a little identity separate from the other buildings. So I'm okay with it.
Mr. Vitale?
I'm all set with the signs, five, six, seven, eight.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with this. The only thing on, and, you know, again, it's up to you guys, but, you know, we losing some on the other side. Is there a reason you didn't want to put one of these logo signs on the other side of the building?
On the facade facing.
Coming down Livingston Street, like, I guess.
We, we felt the flag would, would be a little bit more visible, because when you're coming down the street, you can actually read what the flag says, whereas on the building, the only time you're ever gonna read that sign would be if you're at the property across the street in the parking lot.
Fair enough.
That's kind of where we really.
Okay, otherwise, I'm good with these ones.
Thank you.
So we are on to nine, ten.
Okay, so the main building. So number nine is the treehouse directory plaque on the beam across currently. There's a Tewksbury Country Club directory sign there. We're just replacing that in kind, again, that's not illuminated. Ten is the gable logo. It's a little bit larger than on the other two buildings, just because it's set back from Main Street, approximately two hundred thirty-five feet. It's a tone-on-tone logo, halo lit, and that's the gable logo. Bronze cans, those are the two cans, kind of sitting on the, those pillars where the lanterns are currently. Those are not illuminated. It's, it's just bronze cans with the inlay treehouse logo on there, just something permanent, and it will be real bronze. Number twelve is the chimney logos, both sides, just replacing.
Hold on a second, let me just back up, let's just do nine and ten first. Mr. Fowler, did you have something on nine and ten?
No, I'm all set on, just eleven is the only one I'm concerned about. You've taken the lights off those columns, I couldn't find, you wanna put something in the, your logo? What are you gonna use for lights? Those are stairs that people have to walk up and down on.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, there's a lot of sight lighting there, and there's also lighting under the portico currently to provide that illumination. There will be, down the line, be additional sight lighting as well to illuminate the parking lot and up those stairs. And then, if, if needed, we can provide a floodlight directing down to where.
Yeah, some directional lights.
If we find it to be a little bit too dark, but based on the, the sight lighting around it and also the lighting under the portico, there's, there should be plenty of overlap in that, in that area to be safe for walking.
Very good, all right, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Vitale, or anything on nine, ten, or eleven?
My concern is similar to Mr. Fowler's, when you take those lights out of the, um, the base of the stairs, I mean, the stairs, I, and, and having traveled to the country club a number of times, those lights provide a lot of footing for people's walking down the stairs, you know, going up and coming down, you know, so as you go up the stairs, you see the lamps there that provide lighting to the stairs, so that was one of my concerns, that, that it may be an issue. Usually, the lights are always on there, so I've never seen it without lights there, so I don't know how that lantern not being there is gonna affect the stairs' lighting, so.
Yeah, and we, we've conducted photometrics for the site as well, just to get illumination levels and make sure that they're in adequate, you know, adequate thresholds to make sure that they're safe to walk.
Are they ever fine?
Yeah, and then, down, and down the line, if we, if, you know, we feel that it's not enough, which we don't anticipate based on those calculations, we can provide a couple of lights under, under the side.
Landscape lighting too as well, like.
Yeah, I mean, it's beaut- this site's already beautifully lands, uh, has beautiful landscape lighting, and again, a lot of it overlaps to create that ambient light from, even with the absence of those two lanterns.
Good, okay, I'm good with that. I'll agree with that.
Yeah, I like nine, I like ten. And, you know, the, the lanterns, I'm fine with. Again, my first thought was we're losing some lights, which, in, in hearing your comments about creating an entry moment when it came to the larger sign, I was wondering if going with the, the subtle non-lit here and there was maybe giving up a little something on your entry moment. But, you know, safety being my only real concern, as, as, you know, that's kind of within our purview, I would say as long as it's gonna be examined, I'm not sure who regulates the safety aspects of it, if it comes under the building commissioner or, okay.
Plus, they said having people fall on the bottom of the stairs, it's gonna become a self-regulating problem.
Yeah, yeah. I would just say another option that I've seen a lot in and around the cities of Boston and Cambridge is they have a lot of variety of handrail lighting. And where the green handrail is, is kind of more tied with the lanterns and the old building, you know, that might be something that you can find that would integrate nicely, it could be very subtle, but could also provide that extra measure of safety without overpowering or interfering with the, the rest of the walk. So other than that, I have no other comments on number eleven.
All right, I'm good with nine, ten, and eleven, so you are on to twelve.
All right, moving on to twelve, chimney logos, there's two of these. One of the other side of the building, they currently are occupied by T C C. Word type, or type, typeface? We're just replacing that with the treehouse primary logo. They'll be externally illuminated from the landscape, so there'll just be a, a pin light shining light onto that. Right, we'd love to do the halo light there, but it's a chimney, don't wanna go through the chimneys and, you know, compromise a little bit of that chimney, so. Number thirteen, so thirteen and fourteen are at the rear of the building, so they're not street-facing. Number thirteen is the lookout, lookout directory plaque, which again, would be only visible from the golf course. It's on the beam above that outdoor patio area, not illuminated, and just identifying the patio space from the golf course and making people, making it known that something's actually in there, so people go to it. And number fourteen is the, it's an inlay in the railing, and it's just a treehouse greater Boston. Right now, it's occupied by T C C logos. The only change we're making here is that signage, when you're standing on that second-floor patio, it's facing internal, whereas we're proposing that signage be external, meaning visible from the golf course. And again, that's not illuminated. And that's, that's it for the main building.
So anything on twelve, thirteen, fourteen? Mr. Fowler, you good?
I did have a question, but I think I figured it out myself. I could understand why you want to put the sign on the outside, on the, on the wrought iron rail. But it was something about, I have to rephrase again. Mechanical fastened fence, a mechanically fastened fence.
You can see those bolts at the five point, or one, two, threes, at the six points. It's, it's bolted to the fence and kind of compressed there, so it doesn't move. In, in lieu of welding, that seems to be the approach that the previous owner took. So we're just gonna reciprocate that approach with these signs.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fowler, you all set?
Just one question on, I guess, the brick, covering the brick? Is that gonna be stained or painted, do you know, or is that?
The, the brick.
The brick, just a brick facade?
No, the, so the, the, the stone that's inlaid is existing, we're not, we're not proposing to paint or stain that.
So the, but the, the other areas that go above it, below it?
Yeah, yeah, that would be painted, match the rest of the building. So it's really kind of highlighting that archway, the sign within it, which would be a, a copper metallic painted sign.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I found what I was looking for. It's in the bottom of the T C C picture, railing inlaid signage will be course-facing, be course-facing as the exterior of the second floor. Patio will be obscured by drink rails, what are drink rails?
So they're, they're just like these small tables that you stand up at, so you can put your beer on it and look out to the golf course and watch people hit balls into the water.
Sounds like fun, okay. All right, drink rails, never heard that, thank you.
All right, so fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
All right, so we're moving on to the tavern and the pro shop. So sixteen, just moving on here, sorry. Tavern and pro shop wall signs, again, replacing in-kind from the previous two, Mac Tavern and Pro Shop signs. They're edge lit, which is the only difference between edge lit and halo lit. We wanted something, so halo lit, you'd actually see, you know, the, the beams of light a little bit more. So the edge lit kind of finishes that edge when we're at human scale, so like when we're at, because these are kind of more at the four or five foot mark, so people can actually look into them. So we just wanted that finish edge there to be a little bit more premium at that low point. And there's no signage on either sides of the building. It's just really this one and the back one, which is not facing this, the street. But again, these are just two signs replacing the two Mac Tavern, which said, which called out the restaurant entrance and the pro shop. And then, moving on to seventeen, the tavern directory plaque. Again, it's on the rear of the building, facing the golf course, and it's just really to direct people from the golf course, that's the tavern. And then seventeen, or excuse me, eighteen is the gable logo. And that's that tone-on-tone, not visible from the street. And I believe this one is, yeah, this one's also halo lit, to be consistent with the other two signs. And that would complete, that would complete the signage patch.
All right, Mr. Vitale, or anything on, well, I guess it's technically just sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
Just the, I guess the tavern sign is, is gonna be, you know, the number eighteen is gonna be illuminated as well, correct?
That's right. And that's, that's the golf course facing side.
So when I lose my ball, I can find my way back.
So are you having a tavern there as far as food and beverage, or just drinks?
We're not quite sure what our programs, programming is one to be.
Okay, I'm all set.
Mr. Chairman, anything on sixteen, seventeen, or eighteen?
No comments on the signs themselves, I see you removing the, the golfer, though. Are you returning that over to the course or?
The previous owner deinstalled it, which I found out later, because it was included our signage package to rebrand, and then it wasn't. I went there one day, oh, like, that's the golfer.
Start hunting, those won't, that won't be easy to find.
No further comments.
Mr. Fowler, anything on sixteen, seventeen, or eighteen?
I'm sure Jody would like to have that golfer.
I, just to be noted, we did make arrangements with the previous owner to.
I didn't, I didn't know.
I didn't know.
Thank you, all set.
I'm all set on these ones. All right, so, all right, so we, we only, only have that one to circle back on in a second. I'm gonna open it up to the audience, anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns, please come up, state your name and your address, the floor is yours.
My name is George, and we live at twenty-four Eagle Drive, which is the third floor of building one facing the entrance, where I could tell you one day they have no problem finding the driveway into that building. I mean, which is good. But this weekend, they, there was massive amount of car. So as far, this is going as far as a sign goes. I agree, the top part has to go. All right, now, the columns on the side, now, they're gonna be illuminated?
Just to make it quick, if I understood it correctly, it's only like the, the logo itself and the wording that illuminates, correct? Not the whole thing?
Yeah, and it's just the outlines of those, it's not the front facing, so there's no light projecting.
So for this one, if I understand it correctly, only this little, the lo- not logo, the, the logo and this wording are the only things that light up, not anything on the actual pillar, and the pillar itself is not externally lit or anything, like with a floodlight or anything.
Oh, because, the reason why I ask is because our bedroom is right there. So I don't need any extra lights coming in. As far as the notice goes, if you were talking about, you know what we found out about this meeting? Sunday, when it was posted on the front door.
Like I said, I, I know that the abutters list gets done, the abutters notices go out after that. If anybody has a butter, you notice issues, it's gonna have to be handled elsewhere, just not here.
I guess, well, on, on Main Street, I, I don't see why they, they don't have a, a regular sign there showing where.
Did you say Main or Livingston?
Main Street.
Okay.
I mean, people coming from both directions, you could see that sign right there as plain as day. And as far as them knowing where the brewer is.
Are, are you saying an additional sign, or do you mean the one that's already there?
Use that sign to show where people, where they are.
Well, they, they, you're keeping that sign, that, that sign is staying. Yeah, yeah, that's not being removed, only the electronic piece is being removed from that, the rest of it remains.
So, I mean, you know, as far as the higher the column, are they gonna be reduced or?
Well, I think that's something we still need, you know, do, since you're up at the podium, did you have a thought?
I would think of getting rid of the top part.
Right, which I think we've already gotten to, that part, so now it's the.
Lowering the columns a bit, because the car, you, you could see, when you drive in, you're gonna see that column.
So let me, uh, just so you have this in mind.
Hey, some clearance, those columns are fourteen feet high right there, right?
Right, as I said, I, this is the one talking about, when I made the comment, I think it was somewhere in here, was what I was talking about.
I'd be perfect. Okay, thank you. I guess that's all.
So just, just so everybody else can see what I just did with the gentleman at the podium, when I made the comment, so if you can see where I kind of drew that line, somewhere a little above the end of your. Logo, so somewhere about halfway between that and the top of it, because you don't need it at that height anymore if you don't have the arch going around the top.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you look at the lamp post there, I mean, it's similar scale to.
Yeah, I, I think that's probably, would you say, sir, that the lamp post height is about the same as what you'd be looking for?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think you're probably talking in that range.
Yeah, and, and again, just to echo the lighting comment from earlier, you know, there's currently lanterns there with the, with the halo lit lighting, it's gonna produce a net negative in terms of the lighting projection.
I mean, honestly, I think, to be, to, for everybody's purposes, it's that arch is the biggest issue. That's the thing people have a problem with. So after that, I don't think, you know, net negative on lighting, obviously, you don't want anybody having, you know, lights blaring in their faces, but the concern really is that arch. So once you get past the arch, I think we've, can work from there, but the arch is the part, I think you're just gonna have to.
We're past the R.
Yeah, what's that?
We're past the R.
Yes, excellent, okay. Anyone else in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? Going, okay.
The Qco seventy-three M record. I'm not a beer drinker, but I'm a golfer, so there was eighteen signs there. This is a destination location, not a parasitical location. How do you know where the golf course is? Is there a sign in there that I didn't see that shows the golf course anywhere?
Well, I've got on that entry where the archway used to be, that would maybe, you've got pro shop.
But there's nothing out in the street that says Tewksbury Country Club like it is there now. Like, you know, maybe where they have their sign, where the electronic message board is now, just a small sign that goes across in there that says Tewksbury Country Club, so people know that there's the Tewksbury Country Club.
Or whatever, I, I don't know, you're, you're naming it.
If they're gonna call it the Brew House Golf or whatever, you know, whatever they're gonna call it.
Right.
I just, you know.
It's, it is a valid point.
There's nobody gonna be driving down the street and say, oh, there's Brew House, I think I'll go in there. They know they're going there before they leave their house, so. The golf course, a lot of golfers come. I'm not talking about anything crazy, just, you're taking out that message board, fine, and just a six inches high, looked there and crossed, it says golf course, to be named later.
So I guess, I, I mean, I can see, you know, Mr. Hugo's comment that, you know, on your front sign, is that, are, are you, are you, you're a, are you a one-for-one on the, the link? Okay. So I don't know whether it's something where that comes down a little further, where you can put the branding, because you've named everything else. I mean, you've named it tavern, you've named it outpost. Where you can put the brand, because you've named everything else, I mean, you've named it tavern, you've named it outpost, you've ne, you know what I mean? So I don't know where you guys are on golf course. You know, might be as simple as golf course, I don't know.
I think the feeling was that Pro Shop was indicative that there was golf.
Right, which is on that internal sign, but I think what Mr. Cuco's pointing out is if you're coming down Main Street or anywhere else. There's no indication that there is a golf course there any longer with the signage you have, it doesn't say that there's a golf course there. And his point was, shouldn't there be some indication that there is a golf course there? In, in, in some of this signage where someone might see it.
We're trying to lead with that we're gonna be a tavern experience, so we would like to welcome people to Treehouse and Tewksbury, not lead with that it's a country club.
Well, not a country club, but that there is a golf course there.
There is a golf course.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and two instances we, we defined that there's the Pro Shop, you know, at the entry point, at the driveway, and then also in the building itself.
All right, so what I, what I gather from the slightly evasive way you're answering is that it's not your real intention to publicize the golf course then?
Um, not particularly publicizing.
You've got giant signs that name everything else there, I mean, please don't treat me like I'm a.
Oh, my goodness, no.
It says outpost, so we know what that is, you've got a building that says tavern, we know what that is. The fact that there is nothing naming golf course anywhere is the problem that Mr. Cuco was pointing out. So if your intention is simply to not try to publicize the golf course, your option, what I'm saying is currently nowhere externally is anyone gonna have any idea. If they don't already know that there's a golf course there, that there is a golf course there, the sign that currently exists makes that very clear, that's what I'm, I guess.
So apologies, I thought he was asking, I thought you were talking about putting golf course on the monument side that's on Main Street, but we're perfectly comfortable changing. The, um, the Pro Shop to whatever we may, people will call.
Right, that wasn't what e- either one of us was talking about, we're actually talking about the sign on Main Street, so no indication externally of a golf course being there.
No, it just says Treehouse. It just says Treehouse, right, like the whole encapsulation of it. I mean, we, we feel we addressed golf course pretty well, I mean, we can change the verbiage from the Pro Shop to the golf, the green said, you know, what, whatever we named the course, whatever we decided.
Honestly, I, at that point, and this is just me, I couldn't care less, because if you've gotten that far, if it says Pro Shop or Golf Course. You've already come there at that point for that. If it doesn't have any signage anywhere on the exterior part of the property indicating that there's a golf course there, then that's intentional. That you, you don't intend to put it out there that there's a golf course there, that's your right, but. At this point, since everything else is fairly clearly labeled tavern, outpost, just say it. And if that's what you wanna do, that's your right, I'm, I'm not gonna tell you you can't, but. We're kind of dancing around something here that I'm not really clear why.
I'm not, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to dance around, I don't believe that we put tavern and outpost on the sign on Main Street.
Right, but I mean, you put them in giantly on buildings, so that people will indicate, so what I'm saying is at no point is there a sign anywhere. Other than the small entry one that you see that's a directional that says Pro Shop. That's gonna give any indication to anybody that there's a golf course on this property.
Right, so on the, on the tavern and Pro Shop building, you do have that sign, so that sign.
Says Pro Shop.
That says Pro Shop on the building.
Right, which I think if I'm not mistaken, the only person who could possibly see that is one standing waiting for the bus. At the front, because you'd never see those signs on that building driving on Main Street. It's fine, if you guys aren't gonna put golf course out where anybody can see it, that's fine, that's your right, I'm not gonna tell you you're wrong, I'm just asking. So it sounds like to me that it's not the intention to have any external indication that the golf course exists.
On that main sign, it was just really important to put the primary Treehouse logo with the Treehouse Brewing Company original typeface as that primary sign on Main Street. Publicizing Treehouse Brewing Company.
I mean, that's fine, I mean, you're not advertising the tavern, you're not advertising the outpost on that sign, that's fine, you're, you're free to do so, but. Mr. Cuco's point was, you know, that, that didn't occur to me until he said it, that there is no place where if you were just. If you didn't already know the, the golf course was there, that would let you know that there is a golf course there, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, pro, like, most tee times in, uh, the North, I live on the North Shore, I have a tee time, or I can't just walk on a course anymore, I have to make a tee time, so anybody going to the course has to make a. A tee time, in which case they would understand that there's a golf course there, so.
Completely up to you guys, that's fine. No one else in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? Bring it back to the board, so then the only thing we need to just figure out is how best to deal with sign, let me see, it was four? How we wanna deal with four as opposed to all the rest? So do we have, what do you think?
My opinion would be that we, uh, wait and continue this until the twelfth, whatever, and then, uh, see the, uh, see the design, and then, uh, vote on the entire package.
Which is fine, other than, we're good with seventeen out of, was it eighteen signs? And, you know, I, I presume they'd like to get moving on dealing with them? I don't know, I don't know what your, what your timeframe is.
Is, is, is there any scenario where we can get a conditional approval with a twelve foot, so lowering that sign, a twelve foot monument sign with the weight finding and the primary logo in it? And work on the refinement of that sign with the board?
So what I would say is that maybe, because we're using those two light posts as the limit, does that fit, do you sound all right with that? The light post is a limit in height. So long as they come in below the light post size. I could understand if, if the board is amenable to it, to conditionally approving it, but we need to get a final.
Absolutely.
Version of it, and if we say you're gonna tweak it, you're gonna have to tweak it.
Sure.
Everybody understands? All right, so if that's the case, then I guess if it's the pleasure of the board, we can move forward with that and make it, you know. Something that we just sign off on last, uh, once we see the revised version without the, you know, the T on the top and all that.
And we can get that to you relatively.
Mr. Talia, you all right with that?
Yeah, I guess my only question is how high, how high is that light pole, I mean, is it, is it fourteen feet high?
I think it's approximately twelve feet, that's why we propose, we would propose it at twelve feet, which would be two feet lower than the bottom of that sign already.
Okay.
So I think, I mean, we're talking. Sideways and you, you, you're in the same.
Yeah, I'm taking it, you know, from the top of your logo to the bottom of that base, going across, it's probably. A little more than three feet, but I mean, maybe wrong. Whatever.
Well, that, that T across the top had to fit thirteen, fourteen feet, right? Yeah, so it's at least another two feet down from what you're seeing there is the, the top, so right now you're at about the light pole, which is twelve, which is about where I drew the line. Does that work? Does that work, Mr. Fowler? Mr. Champion, you all right?
Yes.
All right, okay, with that, then I will, uh, what is the pleasure of the board?
Do you need a motion to close the public hearing?
I do. All right, motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and second, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Mr. Lauter, is this, are these waivers that we're doing for these?
No, so for this.
Finding, right?
Right, so. So comment number one was just detailing the, the signs that are specifically outside of the by right scope of signage for the properties. Number two is just a condition that the signs cannot be illuminated in between the hours of twelve and six unless the business is operational at that time. Um, and then, number three is what we put in for all of them is that no signs can be constructed without concurrent electrical permits, um, for anything that's gonna be lit. And number four really just applies to the monument sign, um, in the front, which is pre-existing, so that is kind of a moot point anyway. So no waivers for this, just, um, you know, explicit permission for the signs as listed, with, with the modifications for number four.
All right, so then I will entertain a motion on the signed special permit. Do we have a motion on the signed special permit? Excuse me.
In that motion, do we have to include the clarifications and, or stipulations regarding sign number four?
Yes, I would do it that way, yes.
Yeah, of course, now you're, the wifi kicked me out, there we go, fifteen one second.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion if that's, to move it forward, that we approve the sign special permit for eighteen eighty Main Street with the conditions of maximum height of that. Pole, the block sign on the right, that's twelve feet or less.
All right, so, and, and if you don't mind, just to clear it up, so we're indicating, so sign, uh, this is for number four. As, as presented in the package from the petitioner, that the, um, the arch is removed. And that the, um, the pillar portions are not to exceed twelve feet. You know, the, the, basically, it's the height of those, those, um, lampposts that are out there, but twelve feet, I think.
British height, yeah.
And that was the intention of the board, that there's some sort of capping, sort of, on the top, so that there's something decorative that makes that, you know, so you understand. And the other signs are approved as submitted. And discussed this evening. Does that work?
Yes, just one, one poll, correct?
Yeah.
All right. Okay.
That work for you guys?
Is that just, are we doing just one?
And just for the purpose, or just a question, does, um, does the board have a preference on which side? Of the street? Because we'd like to explore both, just to see which is more.
You're gonna end up with one?
Yeah, it's one, or one of the.
It doesn't matter to me left or right, doesn't matter to you, right? So whatever works best for directional and, because I mean, ultimately, that's what it's meant to be, so. All right, so we have that motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and second, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you very much.
All right, that brings us to, I just scooped up something I should have. Agenda item D, four thirty-four Main Street, this is continued from our eleven fourteen meeting.
Bill's Hall with Civil Design Consultants and with me is Dick Cuco, representing the applicant for this site claim review. So I believe this was before you, a couple months ago, I wasn't present for that hearing, um, but just real briefly, what we're looking at doing here is adding paved parking. At the rear of Monson Lanes at four thirty-four Main Street, along with the storage building, there's some drainage improvements that are happening in that area as well. We've been going back and forth with, uh, DPW to revise and, uh. Just to take care of any concerns that they have, we believe we're at a pretty good point right now. Uh, we submitted revised materials today, obviously, they haven't had a chance to comment on those yet, but for the most part, um. It was mostly minor, uh, doing some test pits on the property, things of that nature. There's, um, a couple comments, uh, one in particular that we'd like to discuss with the board tonight, um, so. Along the side of the building.
Can you just grab the microphone?
Thank you.
Should we, give it a good tap?
Yeah, so along the side of the building, where it's accessed to get to this employee parking area, this is a twenty foot width through here. That's existing, with an existing retaining wall, it's paved to somewhere in this area. And the DPW comment is to make that a twenty-four foot aisle back there. The problem that we have with that is it's right up against the twenty-five foot buffer for the wetlands, so to do that, we'd need to make an ask from the Conservation Commission on it. This is really well established through here, we, we really don't wanna be going that close and disturbing ins- inside that twenty-five foot as little as possible. And it's a pretty substantial retaining wall there with, uh, guardrail and whatnot, so we'd really like to maintain that, um. And. In addition, the zoning bylaw, section six point one point ten F, does allow the board to make that, uh, determination that. An interior aisle could be reduced to twenty foot for two-way traffic, so we'd like to request that, uh, you find that sufficient, given the existing conditions on the site. Otherwise, I didn't see any issues in the letter that, uh, would stop us from having a vote on it tonight, if the board. Felt that way, I mean, I don't know if they're, or, or, or any comments.
Yeah, we've already, the board's already granted a waiver on that twenty-foot section in the past, and already approved a parking lot in that area, so. By obtaining the extra leased land from the railroad, we were able to add additional parking spaces, so. It's predominantly employee parking, everybody that's going back there knows where they're going, employees will not be allowed to park out front. So that we can make sure that there's plenty of parking for patrons, and on a busy night, there's, you know, quite a few employees. And the rest of that area is for deliveries, and the deliveries are done during daytime, so it's not like it's a very heavily trafficked area, so. I think the board can be comfortable continuing with the waiver that was given, uh, in the past for the previous parking area, what do we have, like, you know, the five spaces or thirteen spaces? What do we have for?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
So, um, basically, it gives us a little bit more, uh, of a storage area than the, uh, accessory structure that's going in the back there to, uh. Store items, especially during. Supply side shortages, uh, you know, you have containers, it's, uh, most of the, uh. Meals are served on, uh, disposable containers, so having a good supply of disposable containers on hand, paper napkins, plastic ware, and stuff like that there. You, you buy in bulk now, because you never know what you're gonna get, you can go to Restaurant Depot and see the shelves totally empty. So having that additional storage, uh, affords the, uh, the owner, the operator, the ability to buy expendables in bulk and store them. In that new storage building, so. And they, so that in of itself is only, uh, for deliveries and be accessed by the employees of the, um. Of the, of Monson Lanes. We kind of would really like to get this closed out because, uh, we want to take advantage of that snow storage area, so that, uh, we can get in there, get that cleared out. Um, so that when we do get the snow, uh, we can have that area prepped and ready to go, and, uh, another reason is that. Univar has taken the fence down in the back, because they're putting a new fence up. Well, while that fence is down, it would be a lot less disruptive to the, the, uh, earth in that area if we could come into that area to clear the trees out from. So, um. Bill's very confident that he satisfied all of the, uh, comments, I did talk to you, uh, last meeting about the, uh. The latest, the plans that, were the plans from the previous approval, that we only have those plans that, um, were dated and it's in the letter that, um. There is no plan on the fifteenth, there's only the seventeenth, whatever it is, so, uh, we're, we're pretty confident that that's gonna, to, uh, take place and move forward, so. And, uh, Bill did accommodate them to getting access to the sewer manhole number two, which is pretty much in a wetland area anyways, but, um.
Yeah, and I guess to add to that sewer manhole number two, um, in addition to being within the, the wetland, it's also not on our property, it's on the abutting property. So we've done what we can on our property to satisfy that comment, we've, um, taken the rip raft slope and made that more gradual, put a break in the guardrail on that side as well. Um, it's pretty close to existing conditions out there, and, uh, we've really done the best we can with that, considering it's not on the property and in a wetland. And, um.
It's on the abutting lot.
Yes, and I've been, when we did the sewer inspection, I actually went to go look for that manhole, because we had a hard, hard time finding the other one on the property, and. Uh, without clearing that wetland, they'd be hard pressed to find that, or needed to clean it out for some reason.
Okay, uh, we'll start with, um, Mr. Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um. So getting back to what's, um, outstanding, um, how many, uh, issues are outstanding with? I know you said you're close, but closest could be from one to ten and anywhere in there.
I can run through the comments if you'd like.
Sure.
Um so.
How many others?
There's uh ten comments total.
Yeah, well, not, two of them the same.
But. Yeah, and two of them the same, um so the first comment that was outstanding is about the uh plan and the revision date on it, which Dickson has been discussed, um and there's only so much we can do on that, given that it was another firm that prepared those plans. Um the next couple of comments are about additional test pits, which we performed last uh Wednesday, I believe it was, uh there were no issues there.
No, it was witnessed by the town.
And that, yes, so it was witnessed by DPW, so those are all set. Uh there was a comment on the subsurface infiltration system with the, having to do with the pipe sizing and that. Uh I discussed that with Randy Burley at DPW and we've we've had that addressed uh to his satisfaction. The next comment is about the interior driveway width, which we've gone over um just a minute ago. The next comment is about access to the sewer manhole, which we've just discussed. Um and then the last comment was, well, the last previous comment was um to apply for a land disturbance permit, which we've done. We had three new comments uh on there as well. So one of those comments was to uh remove, as you come into the to the site from Main Street, on the rightmost driveway, there's parallel parking spaces that are down the side, and that reduces the aisle within that area. So they've requested that we remove those spaces and we're gonna do that, we've added a note on the plan set to specify that, note number seven.
Mm-hmm.
Uh so that's addressed. The next one was um the dumpsters that were in the rear of the building are nine enclosures currently, and they're requesting they should be. There's an existing enclosure uh that's just has a pad in it that's not being used right now, so those have been moved to that area, so that comment's addressed. And then the final new comment that they had was that the existing sewer manhole that is on the property should be raised to uh finish grade, which is a part of the proposal, so.
So.
So we have that on our plan.
Yeah.
So not really too many yet, really.
And as I said before, that 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 was the recycled dumpster for codwood.
Yeah.
So we moved it into the fenced-in area, it's uh the, it's kind of a gray area and the board health regulations, it says all dumpsters, so I just assumed that they're not codwood, so it was uh moved back into the area where it was originally intended to be.
So, Mr. Hall, is the fire department all set with what's proposed here?
We've sent the turning templates over to them, um we've provided a plan showing that. They had some comments on it, we revised it, I sent it back to them and uh they had not responded, I had sent it over early last week.
Okay. So I know there's been some issues, Mr. Cuco, as well as far as the ASBILs and being, from what I heard from a Tewksbury uh town staff member that there's five-plus years of outstanding ASBILs not not submitted, is, are we almost at that completion state of having all that done, so?
The ASBILs were submitted back in twenty nineteen.
Okay.
Because if you, I think we had to actually come in and ask for a modification because of some of the stuff that was picked up on the ASBIL.
Okay.
Now we're gonna have to have another ASBIL.
I'd just like to see the ASBILs finalized and and not outstanding, like like some others that are uh in town, so. So if we can get that worked on as far as once everything is completed, getting the ASBILs submitted and done and finalized and project complete, so. Put that on, I'm all set, Mr. Kim.
I'm Mr. Chamber.
Um I was, I appreciate the work you're doing to address the comments. Uh I guess the fire department's gonna review the turning plan, but I I know in general from a lot of comments we received in doing the big loop on the uh elementary school um and all of the traffic flow, the fire department had a lot to say and um I know they're not a fan of going in reverse at all, um especially with the ladder truck. I don't know, and this is just a suggestion, it's obviously under uh chief or W T per view, but uh that curve that you have coming around over here, if you maybe, you know, reconfigured that so they could drive around, and then it occurs to me that traffic coming in this way, that's gonna be pretty tight trying to get into that space. So you might be able to kind of do with two birds, or yes, you would lose a parking space, but I I'm sure the chief would be thrilled if he could just come in and loop right around and back out. Because if for some reason another call came in while the ladder truck was there, and they're trying to do a three-point turn and other employees were leaving or or coming in at the same time, um you know, that could obviously create kind of a situation and a delay. Uh so that's just, obviously, like I said, the final save with them, but um you know, considering you have a space that's broadly unusable, or at the very least, I wouldn't wanna park in the second space and be at risk from that person trying to get in beside me without taking out the microphone or my bumper. Um you might be able to make this a lot more appealing to the fire department.
Yeah, we can take that out.
Yeah, uh yeah, we could remove that space at the end.
Like I said, it is employee parking, so if we, you know, have one less space back there, gives you more of a comfort level to find.
That's all I have.
Alright, Mr. Fallow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was uh also concerned about those parking spaces and obviously you've rectified it, so thank you, Mr. Chair. Um and I am also in favor of not doing anything constructive in that corner where you have the retaining wall and you have twenty feet of space. So that should be suffi- that's sufficient by the the bylaw and it should be sufficient for us. So I'm in favor of, I'll be all set with that for the interior driveway to go from twenty-four feet to twenty feet in that area. So that's it.
Alright, um I mean, other than again, making sure that the fire department has signed off, uh you know, we've already approved the the width previously, so I don't see an issue with approving the twenty versus twenty-four. We burn that approving thing subject to the um town engineer signing off on the last bit that I dislike, but um you know, it's not the end of the world if it's not major, you know, major stuff left, because I mean, again, once we're done, we're done. And if you're gonna butt heads with the the town engineer, that's gonna become your problem and nothing we can do about it.
Yeah.
So, um Ms. Loud, did you have anything?
The only thing I wanted to add was I handed the revised plans to the um the fire captain today for review, so he has the hard copies in his hand right now. Um and other than to say I don't have any lists of waivers or conditions prepared for tonight, so we'd kind of be doing it on the fly. Just because there were a number of things outstanding, I wasn't expecting a vote tonight, so I didn't prepare in that way, but that's certainly not fatal.
Okay, well, and the fire chief's obviously gonna get a slightly different version now because you're gonna remove the space than what he's looking at, so you.
That doesn't affect.
No, no, I'm just saying, but you know, it needs to be made aware that, you know, because you might be able to head off a problem by getting him that information.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, if you look at, if you look at the turning, just radius, that that space has nothing to do with the the fire truck turning, but uh I think Mr. Chairman made a good point that, you know, it's just, it's more than a hundred and eighty-degree turn, so um we take that one out, but as far as the turning radius for the fire trucks, it shouldn't have an issue with them, but.
Yeah, and I'd just like to add as well that the previous plan uh that didn't have these additional spaces in the back, we had proposed a three-point turn very similar to this that the fire captain had signed off on. So I wouldn't anticipate him having issues with the three-point turn, um and with removing that space, it's only gonna improve it for them.
Okay. Mr. Cu- Cuco, I don't have it in front of me, but is there a list of waivers?
I don't think we, I don't think so.
I think the only one is the twenty feet, I'm not sure if that's a waiver, cause the bylaws as you can.
I have a letter dated August nineteenth that lists four waivers, I don't know if they're all still applicable.
Okay, so. Ah waiver from section six point one eight E to live lau- paved parking with no sidewalks. Parking area is intended for employee use only. Uh two, waiver from six one eleven C to law pavement within ten feet of lot lines in order to maintain required aisle and access widths. Post-parking is as close as two point six feet to the rear property line. Uh additionally, the butters property is paved to within two point five feet of the same property line. Three, waiver of six point one twelve, proposed parking is located in the rear of the building, cannot be seen from Main Street. In addition, the parking abuts a commercial lot with uh no existing landscape. And four, a waiver from section six point one thirteen, parking is intended for employees only. No bicycle traffic to the rear lot is anticipated as public access will be prohibited. Is that the bike rack requirement? Okay. Do you already have bike racks there? No. Do your employees bring bikes ever?
They have, yeah.
So we, maybe we should have a bike rack somewhere. Um maybe the back would be a good place for it? Okay, so maybe we can cross that one out?
Put it, put it in the permit that we have to supply, supply the bikes.
Okay. Alright, good enough, alright, so do those all sound right to you, Mr. Cuco?
In ad- in addition to this six one ten F to reduce the interim drive aisle from twenty-four to twenty, and um so you know, you were saying this would be subject to the town engineer's review and approval, um with calling out one specific item that comment number one of talking about the discrepancy in the dated plans. Um the best way to remedy that, as I had noted in some of the notes for you folks there, is that um that the applicant just provides uh an engineer certification verifying that the stormwater system is functioning as constructed. Um just because that's something that you folks would take the responsibility for. And if, in considering there's a discrepancy between what the town engineer has listed in his dated plans and what you folks have, say that you have, um the way to wash that is just to say you take responsibility for the stormwater system and saying that you, as far as I understand, there haven't been any problems thus far, so just kind of putting a um a bow on it and just saying that you're taking responsibility for it and it's functioning.
But I think if if you go back and check your records, there is no plan, never was a plan, but that did. And that's why they can't find it, because there never was, I think if it was a script, is there somewhere along the way? Uh this, you probably still have the transmittals in the files, so, but, delta and suspenders.
Yes.
Okay, but that'll go in the permit, that's not a waiver, so we just do waivers first.
That would be the condition, yes. Yep.
Okay, so let me open it up to the audience, anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing that there is no one in the audience other than the proponent, uh there are no questions, comments, and concerns expected. Alright, so I'll bring it back to the board, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to close the hearing.
Alright, motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous, okay, so for the waivers first, then we have the um so we'll do the four waivers, but we're gonna put the condition in that you put a bike rack in, you guys decide where you wanna put it, but. Alright, so then the waivers were section six point one eight E, six one eleven C, six one twelve, and six one thirteen, as just discussed. Those are the waivers.
Yeah, and six one ten F.
Oh, I'm sorry, six one ten F, I'm sorry, that's for the width. Alright, so uh those waivers are requested, do we have a motion to approve the waivers?
So moved.
A motion made, and do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous. And then as to the uh site plan review itself, do we have a motion?
I think we can motion to approve the site plan as submitted.
Alright, so then we'll, the only caveats are again, waiting on final sign-off from fire department on the turn radius. Um taking the removal of the space as discussed this evening, the installation of a bike rack.
Yeah, when when Bill takes that space off, we'll put a bike rack down the way.
Yeah, like I said, we're just gonna put one somewhere and you guys, then you're, we're good.
Yeah, so if you put it in the special permit, because it may move depending on.
That's what I'm saying, so what, a bike rack will be installed, the petitioner can determine where best to place it, um but one will be sup- uh supplied on on the property, and is that it? Am I forgetting something? Oh, just, and just the note of those spaces will be removed along the, yeah, so that shows on the plan, okay.
On the plan.
And and then just subject to the final sign-off on any of the engineering that's outstanding. Alright, then, Mr. Cuco sending in the, what is it, the engineer's?
Engineer certification verifying the stormwater system.
Okay, and that'll take care of this plan issue, I hope. Alright, so there's the motion, and do we have a second?
Second.
Alright, we have a motion made in second, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, carry on that one. Alright, moving on to old business, any old business anyone wishes to discuss? I'm sorry, oh yeah, that's good, that's sorry, yeah, any old business? Hearing none, any new business anyone wishes to discuss?
I have a couple of comments, Mr. Chairman, and uh these were uh issues that were brought up uh during my discussions with treehouse, with regarding a treehouse issue. And one was the fact that the traffic down there on on the Tuesday and Wednesday prior to Thanksgiving, uh a number of the butters were complaining to the fact that it was traffic, traffic, trafficking. Um the question was brought to me, do you think we need a police detail down there due to the traffic under the various holidays that come up? Maybe it's an extra busy time of year with holidays and um, you know, I didn't wanna bring it up when Treehouse was here, cause that was here here for a science special permit, so. So that was a question I had uh to the board and us as 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 members here and um and the other discussion I had was the fact that the pickup location that's down at Treehouse with the amount of people the other day and ongoing, um there were complaints of all people parking on Livingston Street as the takeout people were pulling in and their lights flashing right in their window, which isn't more than probably ten feet away, maybe twelve feet away, uh cause there's no, there's no um uh no um shrubbery there blocking those headlights uh when they do pick up the bear with the people waiting in line at the red light.
Yeah.
So.
Alright.
So as the people are pulled in, the headlights are still on waiting for the bear to come out and the people that are waiting in line at the red light are getting the headlights intrused on them as they park and wait for the red light, it's just.
It would be more important for the people coming around the corner, taking a right from Main Street South onto Livingston if headlights would be, you know, if headlights were shining on them.
Sure.
So that, so.
But I mean, there's nothing there right now, it's it's, there's no um, there's no um landscape barriers there at all, so maybe it's something we should look at or bring to their attention, maybe they're not aware of it, but was very, very um annoying to people that were, and I heard it from a couple of people that were parking there on on Livingston Street waiting for the light, it just got to be too much, but yeah. I don't know if anybody else has any opinion on that, but.
I would attribute some of this as um, you know, perhaps like a growing pains, you know, they don't really know the lay of the land, uh they're not really from here. I I think prior to now, that was probably one of the the least-used um areas of the parking lot, being so far away from the front entry and all that, so.
And the golf course, absolutely.
So I think, you know, maybe it's just a memo pointing out some concerns, uh maybe they can incorporate something to either uh and you know, down the road when they're fully operational, you know, maybe they reorganize the parking altogether. Uh so obviously it might be worth just getting, getting some uh some of this to them and that way when opportunity comes along, they can incorporate it.
Yeah.
But definitely the the headlight part, that's, I see that as very much a safety concern. Uh especially where, you know, at some point I could see people, uh you know, a lot of people do cross the street there. I know because behind the Tewksbury Sports Club, there's apartments and whatnot, I could see people in there just walking over to pick out whatever they might be getting, we wouldn't want somebody coming around that corner and blinded by headlights and then there's somebody crossing the street there as well.
I mean, we could do it in a manner that we could point out the fact that we had to do something after the fact uh on Burger King on Main Street um with the drive-up cars, they were, the headlights were approaching the cars coming down Route thirty, uh Route thirty-eight going south. So we asked them to put in shrubs in the fence, and they did. And it, you know, the shrubs are nothing, I mean, it's.
Sure.
And it would be a good thing to do there. And with all the foliage and stuff in that parking area, it wouldn't look out of place.
Agreed.
Yeah. So somehow we could uh comment that to them.
I just have one more comment and I'll I'll probably done it, and that was a question of um some work being done on Foster Lane in Tewksbury. Is anybody aware of um any work being done on Foster Lane?
Lane or road, are those two different things?
Foster Lane.
Two different things.
Yeah, so above Dixon, I believe, and behind Rugby Terrace Way. What's that?
Yes. I'm aware.
Oh, okay.
What's your question?
My question was, um is it is it a lot, is it is it work that's authorized and and on permitting or something? That was a question I had.
Sure, so the property owner of the area at the end of what's known as Foster Lane, which is um an unacceptable way, I believe, um Paper Street, if you will. And they received an order of conditions to construct a single-family home with a garage and associated driveway. Um at this time, it was noted that a land disturbance permit is going to be required for the tree removal. No activities that have taken place to date have exceeded that threshold. The property owner has been informed that they will have to come for a land disturbance permit. They're quantifying the square footage to determine whether it's a minor that's handed administratively between town staff or whether it is a major that would require the public hearing component. So that is what's being dealt with right now.
Okay. It's like it's all on heart, so that's great.
On its way anyway.
Yeah.
All right, anyone else with any new business? All right, my only new business, and I'll do it quick, is that I asked Ms. Louden to check in with um Walmart? 'Cause like many fools over this past weekend, I was around Walmart. And when I went in, I realized that they've closed off a whole bunch of spaces near the front entrance and turned them into pickup spaces. Which we specifically told them not to do um because we approved that pickup area that they've, for whatever reason, chose to not finish putting in and have decided to put pickup spaces over where we told them not to. Um so I've asked Ms. Louden to sort of check into it because there was a reason we told them not to do that, which is it's gonna severely jack up that entrance area. Um doing the deliveries, it's gonna jack up that area with cars now coming in and out more often in those spaces 'cause they're only there to pick up, and now you've got the people trying to walk in those lanes with cars in and out. We put it at the other end for a reason. I don't understand why they could not and have not. We approved it in two thousand nineteen. I don't know why it's not done, it's Christmas season.
Yeah.
Um I suspect that they don't intend to actually get it done for Christmas season or they'd be done. And they've just chose to do what they wanted to do all along, despite the fact we told them not to do it.
And the funny thing is, I saw those plans that at the same time in Gilford, New Hampshire there's a Walmart, and they have the same structure and the same thing. They put in the roofs, the roof building, you know, those were not three-sided, the uh shed roof
Mm-hmm.
for the ten spaces. It looks good, and it makes sense, well-designed, people know where to go. But they didn't do it here. I just couldn't understand that.
I do have updates.
Oh, excellent. What is the update?
I contacted the general contractor today who gave me the timeline of completion as the, around the third week of January. And I asked for contact information for Walmart, 'cause I understand that the general contractor's not the one who makes those decisions, so I reached out to the construction manager for Walmart. And she was unaware that they were conducting the temporary order pickup area in the area that was expressly they were told not to do, so my contact information has been given to the store manager and I plan to reach out to her tomorrow, 'cause I didn't hear from the the construction manager until later this afternoon, so that's on the list for tomorrow, is to reach out to the store manager and explain that they can't be doing that, it's a safety concern. And um they need to be following their approved plans. So that'll be on its way. Um and just to everyone else's point about the traffic at Treehouse and particularly the headlights, I can communicate that to Treehouse tomorrow, and they, you know, in their order pickup template, you know, they give you the instructions, you pull in, you do this, you do that. They can make sure that in the hours where we're looking like this and it's a little bit darker, the person who's greeting them and guiding them into the parking spaces for pickup, that that person's telling them, hey, when you pull in and you're parked, lights off. Maybe something like that. See if that alleviates any of it, and if it continues to be an issue, then maybe they explore something a little more permanent.
Okay.
But I agree with Mr. Champ, I think it's a little bit of growing pains at this point.
All right. All right, takes care of all uh to new uh new business.
Even before you went farther, also along the Walmart lines, just a little file and in, they've taken out a bunch of parking spots. So cars aren't parking this way anymore, they're parking, there's like work trucks parking this way. Has anybody seen that?
Unless you turn it over where they're trying to build the um the pickup.
Right where the pickup is area is, all right, in the next aisle over. They've taken out spots and there and there's this this parking there. I don't know whether they're contractor sites, but they're parking this way and not parallel parking at all.
Okay, I can take a look at that.
Yeah, it's just um, I I noticed it before, I'm like, oh, maybe it's something new that they're doing now, to all that, eh.
All right, and then that brings us to correspondence. Our only correspondence tonight is a notice of community outreach meeting for Carnation Cannabis Inc. Who's having their outreach meeting December fourteenth at six thirty at the Tewksbury Tewksbury Country Club. Um this is one of the uh retail marijuana establishments that's you know, crossing their Ts and dotting their Is, so um we'll add it to the list and one day someone will come in here and ask us for it and we'll deal with it then. Uh that takes care of correspondence, so I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
One moment, please.
Oh.
I'm sorry, just to add on to the the correspondence, the select board at their last meeting on November twenty-second voted to update their regulations to more explicitly state that site plan approval will be required from the planning board before licenses can be granted um for the retail marijuana facilities. Now, how applicants choose to do that is gonna be up to them, whether they want to go through the site plan review process right now and then have their approval in hand and go to the select board, whether they wanna run both of those public hearings concurrently is gonna be up to them. But the final license will not be granted until they receive um approval from this board, so that's just something to note that, you know, as we get closer to whenever the Attorney General finally approves special town meeting warrant, um we'll probably start seeing an influx of those coming in.
All right. Then I will now entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
I have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. We'll see you next time. Thanks.